Our new commissioner Frank Posar. Frank was with the city forever. He's retired now. At one time, he was working as an inspector in many different departments. Fire, building. So he has a wealth of experience. He's a great candidate to be a commissioner. And I look forward to working with you. Well, I can play your memory. You ready, Janelle?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Tocca?
Here.
Ms. Dara?
Here.
Mr. Posar?
Here.
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Hafken, he's absent.
Okay, now, we have some minutes to approve. And you're kind of have to help me through this because Frank will have to abstain. We have three, but if one of us missed any of them meetings...
Yeah, one of them, I think Mr. Westbrook's coming late. From the July 21st meeting.
Do we get that? Were those ones in the original?
Yeah, one of them.
But he was still here, though, you know?
Yeah, the question is if you can look at the minutes, Kevin.
Yeah, I do it.
And...
Mayor, you're absent for August 4th also.
Oh.
And I don't think we can do August 4th.
Alright, so we'll do... Do I have a motion to approve the July 21st meeting minutes?
Does the motion approve?
I have motion. Do I have second? We have motion and second. But all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rita?
Okay, fine.
Aye. Alright, so that's form.
Okay.
The approval for the August 4th planning commissions, we do not have form for that. So you can put that in the minutes. So we're gonna start with tonight's meeting with the proposal to replace existing under-the-canopy blade signs for mast stony columns. Is someone here? Hi, come on down. Well, you don't look like a Diane, so...
No, not today.
Alright, do you have a card? But... Oh, okay, Stephen, that'll be good. All set. Alright, now, on this particular item, Frank, you weren't here, but we did have some discussion on that in my memo, alright? And there was not a problem. The only concern was that no one was here to represent him. Okay, we're on the right track. Alright, so it's been discussed. Did we add our comments? There was nothing wrong, except for a couple of things you brought up?
Mr. Mayor, there were really no issues with it. The sign is very similar to what was there previously, and the exception, it's gonna standardize it. So I see no reason that it can't be approved.
Alright, so with that in mind, do I have a motion to accept?
It's just a quick question, so all the, I mean, maybe you don't care if the tenants and stuff, are you approving the...
I'm with the...
The sign?
The sign.
Okay, the sign, okay.
It's the sign.
I guess that wasn't necessarily a DNR question. Yeah, if that's okay, then I'm going to motion approve.
We have motion, do I have second?
Second.
Now, you can't vote on this one because you weren't here, but all in favor? Aye. Approve. Are you in favor, Rita?
Yes, yes, I am.
Alright, you got a form. Alright, you're good to go.
Okay, what's the next step?
You go to the buildings department, they'll take care of it.
Will they open now, or...
No.
So I gotta just come back?
Well, you might not even have to come back. Why don't you give them a call? Do you have a number?
No, I do not.
Well, I don't know if they're extension off.
Eight-three-six-three, Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
Four-six-eight-eight-three-six-three.
I was gonna give you my card and have you transfer it from now. Thank you, six-three, you got it. Alright, thank you, Stephen, nice to see ya. Now, we have proposed cell tower alteration for Sprint. Do we have someone here from that? Hi, come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My memo dated September 6th, 2014. The applicant is proposing to add three antennas onto an existing 250-foot-tall communications tower located at 126 Highland Road. Additionally, new equipment's being installed in the existing equipment shed located on the site. The property is zone general industrial and communication towers are permitted by right in the district. Based on my review of the submitted materials with the application, again, note that the communication towers are permitted. It is an existing tower and most likely is able to support the weight of the additional antennas. This request, my assumption, is connected to upgrading Sprint's technology to provide new and more reliable services. Within the last year, we've seen a number of the communications companies doing this throughout northeast Ohio. I see no reason that this request can't be approved, subject to final comments from the city engineer regarding the request.
Thank you, Frank. There are some comments from the engineer. Could you please read them?
Engineering has reviewed this in the middle and has no concerns. Apparent may be issue for this work on planning commission approval. See attached structural analysis for the memo for reference.
Alright, do I have any questions from the commissioners? Comments?
Yes.
Motion?
Motion approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Rita?
I said aye.
Okay. And you can all, you say aye. Alright, unanimous. There you go. Next on the agenda, Bob, come on down, talk to us a little bit. Proposal for the zombie stunt jump. It sounds like something I won't be using, but I'm sure a lot of people will. We had some comments from our planner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My memo dated September 7th. The applicant is proposing to add a zombie stunt jump attraction to their amusement facility located at 661 East Highland. The property is zone limited industrial and outdoor private recreational uses are permitted by right in this district. Based on my review of the materials submitted, again, found that the attraction itself is an accessory use to the existing permitted use. The platform's approximately 22 feet tall and will require inspection by the building department for compliance with the building code. Buildings within the living industrial district are permitted to a height of 35 feet. Therefore, the proposed platform at 22 feet complies with the code. So at this time, I see no reason that this submittal can't be approved.
Okay, engineering.
Engineering has no comments, that's the middle.
Alright. You do have a written statement, and this is televised, Bob, so it would be nice for you to speak up, please, and read it to us, so we get it out on the air, alright?
Okay. We are attempting to add a new attraction to our park called Zombie Stunt Jump. The attraction is simply a set of stairs that allows participants to jump off and free fall into a patented airbag. The technology has been in several countries for more than 10 years, but is new in the United States as of November 2013. The stairway is simply a means of egress to get people up to the two jump platform heights of 13 and 21 foot. The attraction will be themed with zombie signage and even actual life-size zombies. The stairway is extremely secure and meets code for amusement structures devices. We already possess a special use permit for amusement structure devices upon our property. The steps are also well within the allotted maximum heights of all structures permitted within the city. We had several options for a means of egress. Options for the jump platform included a steel scaffolding system, a set of steel rolling stairs, or a wooden structure. We chose not to use either tubular structure because they were gaudy and unattractive. We want a more eye-appealing and themed attraction. Further, we deem both of the other options as less safe by needing to climb or possibility of falling down lanky steel steps. Both tubular structures would be easier for us to stall and use, but neither fit the curbside or parkside image that we want to project. Also to note is the steps we are building have been reviewed and approved by an engineer. We have submitted the plans for a building permit. This does not fall under traditional building code for places of assembly, but rather an amusement structure, and the steps are a means of egress for an amusement activity. Additionally, to note, the steps are just a few feet above the road height since it's behind the hill coming down the bridge. Finally, even though we are securing the steps to the ground for safety, they're still almost temporary structures. We relocate, remove, or add attractions every year based upon what we feel is popular at the time. And I just included some, we have about 20 different signs that'll be on zombies and some example zombies, a rule thing. Then I included some small pictures of the other structure. This is a steel scaffolding thing which doesn't look safe to us at all, or this tiny picture on the third page of a one set of steps that's 22 feet long.
Wow.
And it only has one platform in the middle, so it's much steeper. Since it's completely mobile, it doesn't use the 7-Eleven step either, it's a little steeper, and we're just worried about kids falling all the way down, actually, so...
Sure.
That's probably a problem.
Is this gonna be inside, outside?
It's outside.
It's outside?
Yeah, yeah, only outside.
Is anybody gonna see it from the road, or are they gonna be behind us?
No, you would see it from the road.
Okay, so where would that be, you're putting it?
It, you can see it's partially constructed. Originally, the state of Ohio, they normally inspect about 70% of our attractions. Currently, they chose not to inspect this attraction as it's new. You know, the manufacturer put together, they had testing back in June where they had people with different devices strapped on to measure impact and force jumping from 40 feet, and they actually dropped instruments from 100 feet tall and measured the impact and force on people. So they know they have that available from the review at this time, they said it's too new for them, they didn't want to go ahead and inspect it.
So engineering, how do you, how does that fall into this? I mean, you guys, an engineer's gonna design this for you, or...
Well, no, the only thing we need is, it's already been designed, and like I said, it's been in other countries for 10 years, and it already has been sold and is new in the United States as of November, there's already people using it. But the only thing for us is the set of stairs, because we don't want the rolling...
Okay, so the engineer's gonna look at that?
He already did, and we, and he should have a copy of the plans, and they're already submitted with this stuff, so 12 copies I submitted. So yes, he, they already approved the steps.
Any other questions or comments?
She have blueprints, she should have blueprints, 12 sets, then.
Okay, put it up.
So this doesn't fall under...
It was done by Pro E Design on Macedonia, and Andy's here with me today.
So this doesn't fall under the stage as far as any inspections and...
Correct.
Fire department?
Department of Agriculture, there's no regulations to inspect that.
But how about, it's still as far as...
It's exempt from their inspections because they don't have criteria to inspect it.
But how about for fire department, for spark rescue and removal people, the stairs and stuff?
Well, it's large enough to be seen.
Yeah, well, first of all, there's a, this is a one at a time, so people actually wait at the bottom, and one at a time, they go up the steps. And there's not, actually, never gonna see people up there. You either go to the 13-foot height and jump up, or you go to the 21st height and jump up.
Well, that person can't jump off or has an issue, or that's my concern, that they can have access to get that person down without just pushing them off.
Obviously, we have the steps to go back down, but that's...
Well, that's good.
That goes acceptable to the fire department.
I remember one time my kids were waiting behind somebody who went up so high and froze. They couldn't go down, they couldn't go up. So there will be able, ability to go get those people.
Right, yeah, we'll be up there with an operator, too, so it's 36 inches wide minimum or whatever it is, and then all the way up the steps, so...
There's no room for us to get up to the fire department, another ladder in there because stairs are...
Any other questions, comments?
So, I guess, what, I don't even sure what question I'm trying to ask, but what, who determines, you know, this kind of thing, you're okay? I mean, I know, like, I see your plan for builds us a roller coaster, and it's, how determined that is acceptable? I guess, is the, this is the first kind of thing like this that's...
Well, what it is, is the airbag technology is patented, and they're actually using it in stunt, stunt man, for movies and stuff now. Someone could jump on it, and like a lot of things, you know, someone else jumps on it. It just completely surrounds the body when you go down, because it has all these fingers sticking up, and so it's a much safer technology than stunt bag. It's not like a bag, you can jump on it, and we don't, two people don't jump on at the same time, but someone could jump on the other side, and this person won't even move. It doesn't like bounce you up or anything like that. It has continuous air re-inflamed into it, and it has some safety concerns. I mean, I'm sure there's engineering, in order to sell the product, they already had to meet some engineering and guidelines for it. The only question was the steps is what we're on, so... But I don't know what, you know, who, what engineer seals they got, and who, Consumer Safety Products Commissioner or somebody, I don't know, who eventually decides whether it's good. And of course, we have to go get insurance on all these items, too, obviously. We can find insurance companies that already have used it or renewed to it in their last summer.
Alright, so we have concerns that were expressed with the safety, but we are a planning commission, and our planner says it sounds good, correct?
There's no issue from a planning standpoint in terms of heights or setbacks and things like that.
Alright, and then our safety department right now is in a wait-and-see mode, correct?
Yes.
So that doesn't test out most from taking action.
There's several other rides they don't inspect, too, that we have.
Right.
There's attractions that they do not inspect, that nobody inspects but us.
I mean, looking at this, though, I don't see where, like, this is just what it's gonna look like, but what I, what I was wondering, like, when you're on Highland there, you have the water theme in the front right there, where is it going? Is it gonna be...
It's where the inflatables were. It's actually, that's where I mentioned, it was just a couple feet above the road height, because it's coming down the hill of the bridge, and it's behind there in front on that concrete pad. Right from the edge of the building.
It's visible if you're going west.
Right, okay.
I mean, what would a bridge, it's visible.
Alright, so coming down off the bridge, there wouldn't be visible, so that's why. I, that's what I was looking for, to see where it was gonna be on here, and that's not on your drawing, so...
Well, you do have some other rides that are visible from the road, that's the whole idea.
Right.
Alright.
Watching zombies come dropping off the, somebody's gonna wreck their car going, "Oh my God."
I mean, I guess it would be similar if we put a Ferris wheel there, if we mounted a Ferris wheel, concrete toilet there, it would still be under the code, but, I mean, just going to use a ride we bring in and put there.
No, the wood, it's a bunch of walkways and...
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, definitely, that's the, you know, it's a little temporary, and we just can leave a stand to do it around, at least it's a permanent looking.
Alright, any other questions, comments, as far as planning goes? Alright, do we have motion?
Make a motion to accept.
We have motion to accept. We have second from Frank? Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Fine. Good luck to you.
Yeah, it was good summer, so this month, the weather hasn't been good, July and August were both good.
I'm glad, they're good. Alright, see ya. Thanks for meeting. Okay, next, we have proposed construction of the patio. Kevin, good evening.
Evening.
Come on down.
It's like a sign.
Doing good, thank you.
Can you take the stairs and walk off?
Do you have any kind of card for Frank, or...
Yeah.
Now, boy, you're ready for me.
Here you go.
I'm trying to find the best one, I'll show you where. You have a very impressive video that they're taking. Well, I'll tell you, some of that stuff's actually amazing, and I, I've never seen how some of that was laid out before, so... Alright, planner's comments on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My memo dated September 7th. The applicant is proposing to construct a patio with seating area and install landscaping on the common areas, blocks A and B, in the Lake Forest Residential Development. Blocks A and B are located near the entrance to the development at the corner of Pond Brook Lane and Whispering Woods Drive, and the property is located in the R1 Residence District. Based on my review of the application, I have a few minor comments. Again, the proposed use itself is accessory to the existing residential development pursuant to the code. Given to the location of blocks A and B, the addition of the patio and seating area, along with landscaping, my opinion will enhance the entrance to the development and make the open space more usable for the residents. The only caution I have, and it is a minor caution, but just want to make sure the enhancements don't block or obstruct any traffic flow or line of sight at the intersection where the landscaping's being proposed. Other than that, and it could be something that's looked at internally, other than that, I believe the proposal could be approved as submitted.
Alright, thank you very much. Janelle, could you read the engineering, please?
Yes. A site plan will require showing specific location of proposed improvements. Dimensions of improvements will be required. Both improvements appear to encroach an existing 12-foot utility easement and will be subject to the conditions of said easement.
Alright, now, that was our engineers' comments as of today. We got this. Now, we have the ability to make our... They were emailed to everyone. Alright, she didn't get them, or you didn't get them?
No, I didn't.
Alright, but she read them.
I agree with you, we have a copy in front of you also.
Okay, let me...
Alright, so any questions or comments from the commission?
So what is the utility easement, how, how that's a hit?
Yeah, I met with Mike and Nick. Basically, there is a conduit that runs under Whispering Woods, and goes back into our nature preserve, and we are actually gonna, we didn't have to move it, but we, it's close to it, but it's, I guess it would be west of the conduit, so it doesn't sit over top of it, and that would be the walkway portion, and that, it's kind of, it's gonna sit, the sidewalk is gonna be on the left-hand side of Whispering Woods, and so, it's not gonna be over top of the conduit, so that shouldn't be an issue. The patio is going to be located in the corner, and it's hard to see. This is our, these are our two lakes.
Okay.
Here would be the easement conduit underneath. The patio is gonna sit up here. That is actually, it's not, that conduit runs underneath the street, there's gonna be at least 15, 30 feet, so if you put...
So which one is that? That's...
It would sit, it would sit like this, at this entrance.
This one?
This would look towards this lake.
Okay.
And then the conduit would be here. I think that's the easement he's talking about. There's also a conduit between the lakes. It's at least 100 feet from there. So it's gonna sit back in this corner to address, there's a stop sign at Pond Brook, there's gonna be a pergola there. It's gonna be off River Run, so there should be no line of sight, and, you know, the people who leave the stop have stop signs, so, and it shouldn't phase that portion.
So this piece, this is going here?
Yeah.
And where is this?
That is going, well, actually, I don't have Whispering Woods.
Okay.
But Whispering Woods runs right here.
Okay, it's on...
Yeah, and here, this would be valid view.
When you, when you look at that, that, that's just, it's a sidewalk detail, so it's gonna be, you know, you have, you're gonna have tree lawn sidewalk, and then this proposed sitting area towards, you know, towards where the, that, you know, in kind of predetermined areas, which would be closer maybe towards an intersection or a school bus stop, where people are able to sit back off the sidewalk.
That is actually where we're proposing it, because that's where it could wait for the bus.
And beyond, as far as a, you know, a place for people to join rather than rather being in the middle of a sidewalk or on the tree lawn closer to the road. This is intended to actually attract them away from the roadways, have a little bit more of a formal way of sight. All the plant material and everything is out of line of sight because it's well beyond the sidewalk, you know, going into it, nor is anything in here gonna prohibit the line of sight from traffic.
How far back is this gonna be from the site, on the road?
The patio is at least gonna be sitting 10, eight to 10 feet back toward the pergola. This would be River Run right here.
Right, so this is River Run?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
And then Pond Brook would hit down here.
Right, pond, okay, but where, how far back?
If this is the sidewalk, the scale...
You have a tree lawn.
You have the tree lawn, you have the sidewalk, and you have 10 feet, and you have the patio, and then the walkway.
Alright.
How far is it supposed to go?
What's that?
How far back is it, okay, so if it's gonna be by the sidewalk, how far back legally is it supposed to be?
Well, that would be, the planner would determine that if it, the distance to the road would be too close. Do you have any feelings on it, Frank?
He already said the obstruction of the view, the traffic.
Yeah, it's, I think it has to be at least 10 feet back.
I think so.
I can confirm that in the code, but...
Well, what we could do is make it conditional, and you have to be aware of conditional approval that we can't have blocking of this...
That makes perfect sense, you know, when I read the email, but like I said, the street, the next street, I mean, you wouldn't stop on River Run, it's a continuous street, and the patio would be on your right-hand side, the next street down is still another 50 feet.
For an administrative review, I'd say, you know, if you could put these on something like that scale, that shows the road and the sidewalk, and where it's at, would help.
So you wanted overlay on that, on more of a sight map?
That, yeah, and I don't know, I don't need to see that, as long as, you know, administrative or I know the engineers just get to see it and it's acceptable.
Is anybody present? Can they verify that? So is it, I believe you had made a mention of 10 feet, roughly, and I'll hold that to you, but that's what you said. Is that 10 feet from the road? Is that 10 feet from the sidewalk? Is that, what is the predetermined factor? What is the offset?
Wouldn't it be just like when you're building a house, it's gotta set back a certain amount of feet from the road?
No, I think there's a difference with the house, okay, because this is the walking structure, just apart, a bench.
Right, I mean, the plan is next year, put in a fishing dock and try to make the path all the way around here. So this is just the first...
In this, the structure would technically sit seven feet behind the sidewalk. So if it's 10 feet from the road, we have, we're seven feet from the edge of the sidewalk to the start of the structure. We typically have four feet wide sidewalks, that would put us at 11, just from the edge of the sidewalk to here, we still have the tree line, tree lawn, between the tree lawn and the road here. So we'd be well, you know, we would be within the restrictions of a closer to 20, another 10 foot, yeah.
It should be told, it should be told, there's a wooded area right here. I mean, it's all woods, so there's a natural line of sight, you know, so it's not going to further, you know, as that.
Frank, any comments, questions?
No. With landscaping and improvement.
Yeah, well, anything like that just improves the value, the value of living there, I guess. Alright, Rita has asked me to, there is a formal letter, a formal challenge letter to this project, but let me say, Frank, we're gonna give you a few minutes to talk about it, you're welcome to add your, say, in the comments part of it, and that's what we're doing right now. But I did talk to our law department today, and this should not be a reason for us not to approve. It's a civil matter, okay? So we can approve.
Okay, one part of it that's not really a civil matter...
Okay, one part of it that's not really a civil matter, because this has to do with the declarations. So say I would put in a deck, I have to get my approval from the HOA, which has to go by the declarations, to okay my, or anybody else's stuff to their house. This is actually them not paying attention to our declarations, Article 7, Special Assessments Code. It specifically states new construction.
Yeah, well, we're, we're in the courts right now for a situation where the homeowners association has the last say. All right? So the city can say, this is okay, this is according to our plans. But you can't proceed forward unless the homeowners association agrees and goes forth. So you could get some kind of an injunction or something where you could stop it if you feel that it isn't going to be right. What we're here for today is to look at the concept and see if it's all right and how it has to be, because it's about ordinances, not your homeowners association agreement. You have every right to express your opinions, so...
You understand that we sent us a challenge letter and they dismissed it. So the thing is, we don't want us, as the residents that signed the letter, which is 15 of us, the option we have, we're trying to not get into a lawsuit where basically it's, we gotta pay twice. We gotta pay for attorneys to stop them, and then we gotta turn around and pay the attorneys through the HOA to try and protect them. So we're stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Well, we don't have a lawyer here tonight. Kevin, rest of the commissioners, what, what is your feeling?
Can I address?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, we, we ran in 2013 a legal election where anyone in the neighborhood could have been voted on the board. There was four of us that raised our hand and became the board members. This is because John formally challenged the board. Nothing changed, same board members. We moved forward. We came up with a budget that has never been done before. We proposed that budget to the neighborhood. It passed by two-thirds to raise our dues from 150 to 300. In that, we proposed we were gonna put a fountain in there. The only person that was actively opposed to it was Mr. Lettasek. We sent out an email on May 1st saying, you know, we'd like to put a fountain in. We did not have any electricity down at the lake. It was gonna cost us more money than we thought. We updated the neighborhood saying we're going to pursue, pursue putting in a patio, which we talked about at the meeting.
No, you, sorry, I wanna stop.
Wait, wait, he has the floor.
We talked about it at the meeting as, you know what, this is what we're gonna do. We sent out an update, we didn't get anybody except one person, emails back, this is, this is not what we talked about. We voted as a board 4 to 0 to move forward with this patio.
Excuse me, do you approve minutes from the neighborhood meeting?
They are on our website. I do not have them with me.
Okay, 'cause approved minutes will state what really went on, I guess. It was brought up in another situation about a minutes approved.
Well, either way, I mean, if we didn't talk about, I, I mean, the meeting was in January. So if we didn't talk about the patio, it was on the agenda to talk about.
Well, I'm just saying, it would be in your minutes.
But we did update, we did update the neighborhood through an email saying we're gonna change courses and put in this patio.
Homeowners associations has minutes, and they have to be approved by the board members.
We have minutes that are on our, on our website.
I've not looked at them.
Okay, I didn't know that I needed to bring them to a planning meeting.
I, I don't know that. Did you see them?
I didn't ask for them.
But how do you know they exist if you don't?
It's not relevant, according to our law department, for approval.
Well, the law department's not here to answer that right now, and I think this should be...
Mr. Mayor, I just, I wanna...
Wait a minute, hang on a minute.
I just need to show you something.
Hank, please.
Okay, I just wanna show you something that's pertinent about...
Please, all right? This is a planning commission. What the planning commission does is review projects and say if they're viable or not. That doesn't mean we're giving permission for us to go forward as far as the homeowners association is concerned. We're saying it meets what we called for. That's it, all right? So that's what this planning commission is here for.
Right, and, and this is...
Now, we could say yes, yes. You have the ability to table it. So this is, this is where the commission comes in. It's, it's up to the commission right now to decide how it feels about moving forward on this. So since we have some dissension, I would like to call for a motion as to whether this should be tabled or not because of the formal challenge letter.
Before you do that, what would, what would, what do you need to prove to you that a majority of the neighborhood would like this to move forward? Like, I'm not sure what John wants us to do.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, tell us, John, what do you want us to do?
I would like you to show us, this is exactly our budget. You don't see patio on there. And here, there's some questions that I put in here. I, I'd like you to read the questions on the bottom here that we never got, we never got a chance to answer. If you'd like to read these four questions that we never got to answer, because we never have...
Well, we got a copy. Everybody got a copy.
I want you to read it so he understands.
I looked at it, and there's a lot of things in here where you have absolutely rights as a homeowner.
I just, I just want those questions answered because those are important for us.
Well, the, the planning commission can't force them to answer the question.
I understand.
Do you understand?
Mayor, I don't understand. If you understand, it's for us, we, we don't, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place here. We want this, we want things to be done right. Believe me, I want it all to be done right. That's the issue here. If we have an opportunity, I did not vote on a patio, nor did anyone else vote on a patio. You see the budget, everybody voted on it. That wasn't, that never was a discussion. All of a sudden, it was email pop up, we're doing a patio. We should at least have the opportunity to meet, have a board meeting. He didn't call the board, he said, we could ask those questions.
All of those are very legitimate, sir.
I asked him to just table it, to ask him to table it.
You're asking us...
I'm asking you what, what do you want? Do you want me to get 6, 6 inches?
Mr. Mayor.
Kevin.
Don, John, what do you want?
Call a meeting, and we'll discuss the patio.
John, do you understand that every time you call, we didn't, it costs money? It costs money to know all things, everybody. We updated people, no one says anything.
Mr. Mayor.
John, you're the only person, you're, you're a minority of one.
If I could give you an opinion regarding this?
There's 20 people that signed that letter, Kevin.
There's 15, John.
I have 15 people.
That's 15 out of 151, John.
Give you an opinion regarding this issue? Absolutely.
15 residents signed that letter.
That's out of 151, and none of them, none of them in that form of town.
All right, Kevin, I know, very upsetting, both of yous. Calm down for a minute. We have a professional here who says he's able to give us an opinion on this. Ryan?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The application that stands before us this evening, who signed that application? And are you a member of the board?
I am.
And as a member of the board, you have the right to submit an application, is that correct?
I would assume so, yes.
So this issue tonight that's before you is purely a planning issue, 100%. The issues that are being told this evening are strictly a civil matter, that unfortunately, I understand there's a desire to table it, but from, from the governmental side of it, the city of Macedonia has really no rights to table an item that's planning-related based on civil matters between the homeowners association disagreement.
All right, and that's kind of what I got from our lawyer, not the exact words, but I got those words. Well, you still have a vote, all right? Now, we have been presented the facts, we have been presented with the letter of challenge. What's your pleasure?
I moved, we tabled this until we receive further information from the homeowners.
Do I have a second?
What information would you like?
Wait, hang on a minute.
There's no approved minutes, sir. There's, I, 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 enough us to go forward.
I did not realize I had any approved minutes to a civil, to a planning committee.
About this project, and I don't get confirmation.
I've already addressed the challenge letter with the neighbors.
Well, until that's resolved, I think it's taken this.
It is resolved, I don't understand how that...
Kevin, please. All right, let's see if we have a sec, hang on a minute. Will you please?
I will.
Do we have a second? We don't have a second, motion fails. Do I have any other motions? Have motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second.
Before, before we take a vote, I kinda, I kinda understand where you're going from, this, it's because there's some confusion going on. But I don't know what we have to do with that. And what, you know, if it has approved minutes, what's the, that's not gonna tell me anything.
You guys denied somebody to go forward with a permit until you heard from a homeowners association. And now there's a lawsuit in our city. So which makes the difference on this one?
This is the homeowners association right in front of us.
And the homeowners association may be for us for...
And they're recommending we do it, no? They recommended that we didn't.
Okay, there's a motion, you guys made a motion to approve, so proceed, I guess.
We have motion and a second, and this was the discussion on the motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Mayor Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Poser?
Yes.
Ms. Dara?
No.
Okay, it passes.
Thank you.
And John, you have every right to do whatever you're gonna do, but not the city, okay?
I just, just wish you'd look at it a little bit differently, Mayor, because this was not...
It's not a personal thing.
I understand, but you understand, now we got a man attorney to, now we have another one.
This is not a city matter. This is a matter between you and your homeowners association. Alls we can say is this meets what we have to have for planning. Not if it's right, wrong, should be...
You understand that, but we...
Okay, we have to move on, John, please, we have to move on.
We can't be...
Who's gonna expect our terms?
Yeah, we can't be arguing it, I'm sitting here.
I'm not asking.
Okay, moving on. Next is planning zoning code change related to accessory structure. Sylvia?
And last time we were here, we had referred it, or we've got, talked to the legal department, and they have been working with Mr. Engel on this. And for those who may not have been watching the council meetings last week, the approved eight areas of the language to, basically, the point of the language was to change our zoning code to permit a, a structure to remain on a property as a garage or a barn, if it was built conforming to the code originally with a primary structure. The primary structure was removed for, for various reasons. There, I know there have been other ones in the city. There was one at Guadalupe Church where they had the rectory, and they removed the rectory, but they left the garage. This is another property we also had issues with, where there was a primary home that was demolished due to a citations. And this is the garage slash barn structure that was associated with it. And the only change was to make the code say that you did not have to take this thing down if you in fact removed the primary structure, if it was built conforming to the zoning codes originally.
We were discussed in the meeting, and it was said that the planning commission did not make a decision on this, so council went forward with this and passed it. And since that time, I vetoed it, all right? So right now, do you want to proceed with an opinion on whether this should be allowed or not? Or do you want to wait?
It almost doesn't matter.
Right, it didn't matter when council went forward.
I mean, you knew what our intention was, to see what happened at the public meeting, and they obviously don't care, so an opinion means nothing. So I say we just dismiss it, take it off the agenda.
Motion to take it off, we have a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye, pose, so it's off the agenda. All right, thank you, Sylvia. Moving on to...
That was, oh, that comes in, I don't know what the 11, right? 9/11, okay, yeah, never mind.
Yeah, that was a bad day.
All right, go on.
All right, next is Jim Digatown on Tom. About talking to us about the biannual tree board review.
Okay, what we've done this year with the trees, Tom and the ODNR, Alan Seaworth, we did inventory of the streets in Macedonia and the trees. We've done that because we have to, it's, it seems to be, it's been lost in the last couple of years. So we started the program up, and Tom has some figures right now that, I think we presented some of them to the, at the last council meeting when Alan Seaworth came, he gave you some figures there. And what we're trying to do is to get this back in order with the proper funding and the types of trees that we want to put in neighborhoods. In fact, one of them, I, I gave you all a copy of what we're looking at to do with Canyon Woods. We had a meeting with, it was Paul from Craft Tech, myself and Tom, last Tuesday. And I think we're pretty close to an agreement of what type of trees we're gonna put in. And we probably won't do anything till spring, because we don't feel this time of year or parts of fall would be a good idea to plant them. So we want to wait till spring. We think that's a better time to do it. What we're gonna do in the opening of the, before they were talking about the, what was that, the pear?
Yes.
Cleveland pear?
Yes.
We basically came to an agreement, there's Japanese lilac trees that we're gonna put in the beginning of the development. But there'll be about, what, 15 of those?
Yeah, roughly 15.
Well, if I might ask you a question, Jim? All this is good stuff to explain to the planning commission, but were you told that you needed approval or disapproval? Are you just presenting this?
Well, what we're doing is, as far as Canyon Woods, we're just working with the developer. And whatever he feels and the, and the people, what we're trying to do is make the developer happy and the residents.
All right.
Because I think that's more important than, you know...
Do you need approval or disapproval? Or you want to just inform the planning commission?
No, I don't, I really don't think that we need an approval. All we're trying to do is, we're, since you guys are our tree commission, we're trying to just get you guys more on the same page with us.
Got it.
That way, if we go into a new development, all of our trees are based on a scientific approach instead of whatever you like, okay? The, the reason that we haven't picked a pear tree is they're very high maintenance, and they are on Ohio invasive species list now. So we would rather not use those. And throughout the city, with the estimate that Alan and I worked on, we come up with, there is like 15% of the trees in the city are pear trees, which doesn't sound like much, but 75% of the trees that we do have in the city, we only have forest species.
Is Alan's last name Seaworth?
Seaworth, yes.
Seaworth.
Yes.
Let me tell the, Kevin and Rita was there, and Frank. Alan actually came to a council meeting and gave speech or a little talk in public comments, and it was very, very interesting. The question was asked about pear trees. He went into an in-depth explanation about what you're telling us, that pear trees are not the best tree. They're pretty, everything about them is wonderful, except they're not strong enough.
Yes.
And branches break, they die, and those things happen. So I'm glad you're taking the time and the effort to do this before planting these trees instead of after, all right? That's all good stuff. So now you're going to be putting in, what is the tree of preference?
Well, we had, like I said, we had a good meeting with Paul, who's the developer, and he's meeting with the residents, but we came to an agreement, these are both beautiful trees, they're flowering trees, that's something that they were looking at.
Sure.
They're stronger, and they actually flower longer than the pear or an apple. So this is what we came to, some type of agreement. I think we, we called Paul today, but he, he still has to talk to some residents. But there will be lilac trees actually to approach, and they actually will smell like lavender. You know, have that look to it. And then the rest of it, as you could see on the second page, is a, don't ask me to say this, because I'll say the American part.
It, it's a bone and horse chestnut.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're just gonna, that is a scientific statement.
It's a very, as you could see by the picture, there's huge flowers that'll be on this tree. So it'll be very attractive, and it's a stronger tree. In other words, 10 years from now, you're not gonna be walking or driving by and a branch is gonna fall down, because I've seen that happen with the pear. So that, that's one thing we're looking at for that development. Just to try to, and I think what we're gonna do from now on is try to work with residents and see what, it makes them happy, but stays uniformally, too.
Sure, sure.
And we're also looking into that one, Tom, you want to explain that tree?
Well, what we was looking at, just to get some diversity in that neighborhood, on the back page you'll see the black gum. We was gonna mix that in with the horse ch... We was gonna mix that in with, uh, the horse chestnuts. They both get, you know, you're, you're looking at a tree that'll be roughly seventy feet, seventy feet tall at maturity. What we need to start looking at is, we're putting pear trees, we're putting crabapple trees in ten-foot tree lawns. We have a ten-foot tree lawn, let's put a tree in it. You know, these are the, the more appropriate trees for that space. Uh, the smaller areas, then we could get away with the smaller trees. The only reason that, uh, I chose, uh, the lilac trees, it was such an argument about the pear trees, that I said, you know what, I'll give on this one. And at the beginning, we'll put your lilac trees, and then throughout the development, then we'll put the bigger trees. So everybody seemed happy with that one.
So you've got the approval of the, uh, residents, you, you're here tonight explaining it to us. I really appreciate you taking the time out of your evenings to do that. Are there any questions from commissioners?
Yes, so, so you're working Canyon Woods, is there any other areas where you still have decisions to make about it?
Well, there's other area, and that's what we're working on also. We did an inventory, uh, to get us up to speed, uh, we have our subdivisions, a lot of them aren't completed yet, and we will probably need additional funding to go into those areas. Also, we have to look at, uh, and I have questions that I'll present, you know, not only to the, the commission, but to council also, and also at our, uh, budget time. Uh, we have a lot of trees that when they die, such as pear trees, are, they're failing. And at, at one point, do we continue to replace these trees? And if that happens, then we have to find some way to fund this, where we can replace trees that are, you know, dying in the community or on the tree lawn, are they still our responsibility? And if they are-
I was gonna ask that.
We need to be able to fund that, because it's not cheap to replace them. Because not only do we have to take, cut them down, but we have to do the, you know, do stump planting, and then we have to replace the tree, so you're looking at a tree that used to be two hundred dollars, two fifty to replace, could be as high, as high as three fifty now, because we're stump planting too, and we're also manpower to cut them. So this is something we have to look at and, uh, down the road, and we are working on it at, with the arborist and with the ODNR, to figure out a way to see how we can work through our city. We still have a lot of tree work.
Well, um, another point that was brought up is drivability, uh, problems with the trees, and that the trees needed to be maintained more, and they aren't being maintained. Uh, how does this affect things? I wanna thank you, Jim, for cutting those branches. When you're making a right turn onto eighty-two from Crowe, the branches on the tree were hanging down so low, you could not see approaching traffic. Uh, Crowe's a good example, as I drive down Crowe, my God, there's trees, branches on the ground.
You know, that's one of the problems that we have. Uh, I, I carry a dual hat in the city, as you know. And not only am I the city arborist, I work in the parks. It, it's, and Jason and I are the only two full-time people in the park. We're doing the best we can with what we have. I would love to be able to go through the city and make this place a showplace.
Sure.
I would love that.
I know you would.
You know, it's just, um, I, I hate just putting little fires out all the time. I would like to go down, down the streets and be able to raise these trees up to the fifteen foot that is a requirement for us.
All right, so basically, working with the parks, your time is consumed cutting grass, keeping the parks in shape, and even that, we have some complaints where we're not taking care of the flowers, but we have to remember we have two men.
Yes.
And that was, that's a whole lot of grass.
Yes, we have three hundred and fifty acres of grass to maintain.
We, we had summer help though here, these kids all went back to school, there was a lot of summer help.
The, the problem with this-
A lot of summer help, Jim, how that was-
No, what we had was, uh, we actually only had, out of the four that I hired, three quit right off the bat because it was a little too rough for them. So we actually, uh, Brian came and worked with us, that does our camera work, and then we had three from the, uh, from the county that came in that we didn't even have to pay for. Uh, that's also in our budget, something that we're gonna look for in the future for more help. Uh, I'm gonna try to give them a little bit more money, and hopefully we can get more like college kids, kids that, you know, need money so that they can, you know, go back to school and have something in their pocket to, you know, to help pay their bills.
Well, how many men have we lost so far this year? One?
Uh, so far, Bill, yes.
Bill?
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, we had three in the administration's budget to be hired, and did we hire?
No, I haven't replaced Bill yet, I, I have a person of interest.
So we didn't even replace Bill yet?
No, I have a person of interest, I'm gonna hire him, and then I did speak with council members.
Well, that's off the subject. You're here to talk about the trees, and there's a lot of things with trees, and then thank you for the effort you've given.
Right.
Tom, you do a great job for, for all you have to do.
The only other thing that we're gonna do also to look at would be to, if, if, under Tom's, uh, guidance, uh, maybe get contractors to come into the city and trim some of the streets. Uh, of course, under Tom, we'll keep an eye on, make sure it's being done right. I did get a price like, say, for ledge acres, one street, you know, and, uh, I was given a price for what we do, because we have a very bad problem on ledge, uh, in ledge acres, the trees are so low, I mean, they're scraping car, you know, rust of cars, so-
Does any of the residents ever cut those branches besides me? I go around and cut my branches every once in a while, because people are walking down the sidewalk, and there's a branch hanging in their way, and I have a little saw on a pole, and I go take it off. Do many people do that, or nobody does that?
Very few.
Very few.
Yeah, very few.
Do I get extra points?
If, if you did it right, you will.
Well, the tree's still living, so-
Yeah.
All right, anything else, Jim, or any other question?
No, it's just that, this is a work in progress, we're trying to catch things back up.
All right, well, thank you for coming this evening, and no other questions, right? No, all right, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, uh, Nordonia Hills Schools' minor revisions. Hi, how you doing? Hello? How you doing? Yeah, everyone's good, see?
Several years.
Yeah. Live TV. Okay, Michael and Tom, everybody knows Tom Hockman, okay? All right, may we have the planners' comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my memo dated September seventh, uh, the subject being site plan amendment for Nordonia Hills City School District. The applicant's requesting to amend their approved final site plan by, uh, one, relocating the softball field to the area previously approved as practice soccer fields, two, eliminating the two practice soccer fields and the cul-de-sac road leading to those fields, three, orienting the varsity baseball field so the outfield faces the football stadium rather than away, and four, eliminating the band slash multipurpose field to accommodate the var- varsity baseball field, and finally, five, creating a half-practice field for soccer adjacent to the varsity baseball field. Uh, my review is based on information contained on application, which includes illustrative site rendering dated September fourth, two thousand fourteen. Um, I have little to no comments, uh, really, this is just a rearrangement, in my opinion, of the site. Um, the site went through extensive reviews initially. Um, again, I think it's related to a general site planning issue pursuant to section eleven thirty-seven point oh five of the code. Relocation of the softball field and creation of a half-practice field for the soc- for soccer likely will reduce the, the project costs. It's an assumption. Um, the project will not, uh, the change in the project will not increase the impervious surface, uh, areas based on my review of this, and, uh, doesn't seem like it'll increase the need for any additional off-street parking. Based on these facts, I believe, uh, this request can be approved as submitted.
All right, thank you, I'm sorry about the noise, okay. Thank you very much for going out there. All right, now we have engineers' comments.
A visual engineering signal will be required in accordance with CO eleven thirty-seven oh five site plans. Civil SSW CD will be required.
All right, um, comments and questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I only have two comments. One is, I received a, a phone call and then a text message because I told him to text it to me. A possibility that handicap parking west side of the stadium for closer access to the home stands, right now, they must park on the visitor's side? Are you aware of that, or do you know what he's, they're talking about?
Yes.
Right, so, okay.
We weren't able to put anything on the home set because of the stormwater, stormwater.
Yeah, that, there's, that's been that way since it was built, and it was approved that way.
All right, so, because of the stormwater?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, stormwater, okay, um-
Yeah, well, um, I use handicap, because I have toll-ups, so I, I have a hard time walking. And I walk slow, because it's a ways to go. But, um, I understand that the criteria that you had to have for stormwater was tough.
It was.
And then now we have the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, which started to do charging, which would exempt you. Were you, was that making a difference?
It was, I mean, we initially were receiving some of the stormwater charges, and then again, that ended our bill, but it was, uh, it made a big difference.
All right, so, uh, yeah, it was a pain in the, but you did end up with an advantage by having all these stormwater things in place, so that it's costing you less money in the long run. All right, um, any other comments, questions?
Just, um, I received an email from a resident, and I had Janelle send it to everybody else. Um, she was just in question, she was understanding that they were coming here today and, um, and that the school board cannot approve any funds, um, at this time for the project yet, so I just had to-
All right, yeah, and, um, uh, as far as that goes, I think we're in the same situation where we have to approve or disapprove what our planning and, well, how it is affected by our codified ordinance, all right? Um, then, after we say, yes, you can do this, then they go to their board to fund it. I mean, we, we're not saying, go ahead, build it, we're just saying this meets our codes and standard.
Right.
So if we can, if you could pass that on to-
Their, their situation's different than the situation just left us, and I agree with you. The board, under the board approval, I don't have any problems accepting all of this, um, you know, of course, you have to get the board's approval, okay, that's a big difference.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of steps we have to take yet.
Right, I know.
This is just the initial minor revision.
Is there any other, Frank, you got anything on this?
I, I just have, for information, not necessarily that, I was just, looking at the two drawings here, the northwest parking, is that, that's remaining, the, the drawing is a little deceiving as to, is that this? And it has nothing to do with what you're changing there, I can see the, the parking up here is marked in rather distinctive, and over here, that back section, it's kinda, it's like it's eliminated, or?
Oh, no, no, that, that was actually completed.
That's what I thought it was, but it looked like, it was like it was disappearing on this, your revision.
No, I gotta make sure that we still had that.
I believe the highlighted areas were included.
Yeah.
That's there.
It was coming out, like, so, just for information purposes, I'm gonna make sure I have-
When, um, tomorrow morning, if you get a chance, are you gonna see Joe Clark?
I'm sure, yeah.
Oh, all right, may, can you two call me?
Hmm, sure.
Mayor, I have a couple questions.
Sure enough.
Uh, right now, that, that drive around the back on the west side is limited? Is that gonna remain limited, or it's only single with?
Are you talking limited use, or?
Yes, yeah.
It'll, we basically, it'll be, yeah, it'll be changed to the grass pavers?
Right.
Yeah, that'll be all the grass pavers, the, the use that we have now would be the same use.
That way, we, we would still have emergency access without blocking up the drive and the road.
Good question.
And you were proposed to pay that gravel section?
Yes. By the tennis courts?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, your stormwater is under that? You not put at the risk of damaging that by having vehicles in and out of there?
We talked to the, the McPheeney about that, and that'll be part of what you do going forward, take a look at, you know, the current situation.
I mean, that's why it was never originally paid, because that was, were your stormwater bed, is that?
Well, it wasn't originally paid because it wasn't a piece of that phase, it, it was always the next phase of project. Unfortunately, the funding wasn't there soon enough for that phase of project, and so, until-
Yeah, but I think all of your piping network, were your stormwaters, is in there?
There's no piping, it's all stowed underground.
It's terrible to drive on, I drove on it, uh, Saturday, it's terrible.
Yeah, it's not really intended for parking.
Yeah, I, I was over there with a bunch of kids, and I couldn't believe it.
Well, when you have a football team that wins fifty-five to nothing, there's no place to park.
It's an issue.
It is Friday nights, yep.
People do park there, so, I mean-
Well, you know, there's, there's, they're, they're doing that so that they can save money, uh, because stormwater is something that there's gonna be fees imposed on Macedonia. And when this was being built, they worked very well with our engineers, coming up with all these things for stormwater retention, storm, it, it cost them a fortune, all right? And they had to be made, yeah, they, things had to be done according to the specifications in order to move forward, but she's not listening anymore.
I'm listening, I'm listening to you.
All right, now, are there any other questions, Frank?
What type of, uh, like I said, the access drive is being removed, um, across the street?
That is correct.
Is there?
There's gravel there right now.
Right.
With the acre, so we were just going to modify that, keep to gravel, so there's a place for the vehicles to move in, or enter, park, or pick up any, um, furniture player and exit. We don't feel necessary to bring them all over there, so we're utilizing existing gravel.
Maybe that could be shown on there, that there's, that there's still gonna be, that doesn't, I can stop mine, but I think there should be some indication on there that there's still gonna be access, that's there, on the revised part.
All right, so we have a couple of conditions from the engineers, we have a condition from Frank, Kevin?
I got any questions? So, just, roughly, so, there's not gonna be parking provided over here anymore across the street, the softball field?
Other than that gravel, we're using some of that gravel that's there. There won't be a, a full parking of that.
Okay, I guess, maybe his first question is, why, why the change? I'm curious, what, what's driving?
Actually, several things, one was finances, we wanted to reduce the, the overall cost of, you know, continuing and finishing the rest of the project, so the scope was reduced somewhat in terms of not, not having the structures that we had planned to have before with, with dugouts and some of those things. We were gonna have, um, um, block dugouts and things of that nature.
Yes, strip block, um, we ran out of lights on the baseball stadium, um-
So there's not lights down?
Not baseball, no, softball across the street, there will be, because you're after parks.
We brought together a committee of, um, residents, uh, coaches, um, youth, uh, some of our youth organizations, uh, NHJA, which is our, you know, big youth softball, our baseball group, brought all those folks in, some board members, administrators, and like, kinda hashed out what it is we really wanted and what we need.
This new plan, okay, 'cause that was my question, is who was all included in this? Just, I think it could play soccer, no one's soccer coach. I just don't see him crazy about wanting to, you know, you expect to practice on grass and play on turf? That's different, two different world, you know, but I, I mean, I, hopefully, coaches, athletic director were included in some of these conversations.
They were.
Okay. I guess, we're, you know, I know, obviously, varsity football practices out here, is there, aren't there practices that go across the street as well, football practices, like freshmeners? Is there, aren't there practices that go across the street as well, football practices, like the freshmen or something?
They, yeah, the athletic director sketches all that.
Yeah.
He tries to utilize all the, all the space that we have out there. Sometimes across the street, sometimes across the creek, across Blue Jay, into that field as well. And he tries to rope the hooz on the turf.
Okay, I think this is gonna, at least more options, I guess, this is where this is.
If it gives more options than we have, we would love to have many, many more options. We just don't have the acreage to, to be able to do it.
Now, the history in the ball field across the street from the, from what I gather, there's several, several Nordonia men that built that.
Correct.
Okay.
Memorial Field.
And there, that's not gonna take away from, it's just gonna be fixed up a little bit nicer for them.
Actually, it's gonna be, I mean, the old, the old field will be torn down and turn, we'll build a new field, turn the field. It'll still be called Memorial Field, which is what it was designated.
Well, do, do they know about that, though? And they're all in agreement with all that?
Rodriguez, Mr. Rodriguez is one individual who is, I've talked to, his granddaughter dates my son, so. A little connection there. And also, our men's softball league uses that field.
Right, and that's.
They were on our committee.
Okay, because I know that that was brought to my attention, which I never knew that until one day I had a conversation with a gentleman who helped build that or, and help finance it. And so that's where they all played for many, many years and they still do. And there was an issue, I think there was something sudden, maybe a couple of years ago, that was gonna go away.
Correct. Initially, it was gonna be softball.
And they, I know that some of them, you know, were very vocal about it and were very upset about it, so.
And that's one of the reasons the plan changed as it did, where if you look before, the original one, it was gonna be soccer fields.
Right.
And now it's gonna be more a field, it's gonna continue to be a softball field.
Right, okay. I wanted to make sure that's protected.
Yep.
All right, any other questions?
Yes. Do you know, the way you're laying out the baseball field is, you know, you're getting rid of the dugouts and it's just gonna be fenced in. Is what you're doing preclude from building dugouts sometime in the future? I mean, is there space to do it if, you know, an athletic firm or something decided to raise some funds to build dugouts? Or is it, you know, geez, it's just not gonna be the room the way it's laid out? Do you know?
I think when we look at this, the room is there.
The room's there and we are away, keep in mind, we have that repairing setback from the creek.
Right.
And you can't build it due to the.
Can it feel good? Because you're still.
Feel good, we can't have a structure.
Okay.
So just a little refresher from what we went through five years ago. But however, to answer your question, we, in the future, once we're there, there is room to build a better structure.
All right, good question. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, could I ask one question, Mr. Mayor? As I was looking at this a little closer, is that the partial soccer field, the rectangular area, is that the goal?
Down here.
So I'm looking at the illustrative, just, is that the goal area? So what's the distance to your left center field? Approximately three twenty-five?
I think it's two seventy-five down the line, so you're about three hundred, three twenty-five.
Is it practical to flip that so the soccer goal's on the opposite side? And high school boys are gonna hit home runs. You could be potentially parking one into an area where they're shooting goals.
Flip the soccer field.
Yeah, flip the, just curious if it's practical, because it would eliminate that.
We, we did that, we could eliminate, it's possible. And we can, we can eliminate, you know, the idea of where the chance of baseballs going in there. I guess that is a safety. And will increase the amount of soccer balls that you guys lose at the end of the crease.
Yeah, you're different seasons too, so you're, you know, it's different timelines.
That's the question I had. It's if the seasons overlap or not, I'm not familiar with that.
Anymore, so much of the youth programs stuff go on here, but in terms of high school, there wouldn't be that type of.
All right, well, we have room here, we have, the motion will have to contain the conditions from the engineer and Frank's access. And we want you to look at flipping the field if possible for safety reasons. And if you come up with, that is not a must. That's just a suggestion, but it will be in, in the motion. So we have four things in the motion.
An approval of the board numbers, right?
Well.
Approval of the funding.
Up there. The board.
They, we don't put that. That's, that's completely out of our hands. All right, so we have before the planning commission, a proposed minor revision, four conditions. Do I have a motion? You wanna make that motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Whatever you said.
Yeah.
They'll give you, Janelle gave you a list, but you know.
Do you have it, Janelle?
No, you repeat them.
All right, we're going to use as, it's conditional approval, all right? And the engineering comments, just so those are met. Access to, what side, Frank?
Would be the south. Well, I don't know what side you guys are going to say, as far as the access. The access, this is all of the access is shown, that'd be the access.
Showing, showing access on the south side for, for pedestrian or vehicle?
Just for vehicle.
Just for vehicle?
Yes.
All right, did you get that one?
Recommendation.
Mine's included.
It is, okay.
All right. That's three.
Suggested field flip.
And then the suggestion for the, look at if there's a possibility. And that's just simply a suggestion. All right, so now, do you have that, Janelle?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, and of course, the final doing this is up to the school board and everybody else, just so.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right. Uh, do I have the right schedule because next I have the proposed ground sign permit, is that correct? Or what, is this the one that had the addition or will it be? Yeah, okay. All right, so proposed ground sign permit, Joe?
This meeting's like the old days, Janelle.
Yeah, you haven't been up here in a while.
It's time to get a little bit of all.
Yeah, you've been there a long, 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 long time.
Mr. Claus, we got a fire. Will you buy any chance or? Thank you, sir.
All right, now, as far as the commissioners are concerned, we had, our, our planner had a problem with the locations of one sign in proximity to the other, correct?
Correct.
All right, and Joe had very much concerns with what was being suggested. So we tried to bring you two together to work it out. So where do we stand, Brian?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I have spoke with the applicant, actually, several times since the last meeting to better understand the situation on the property, went out and looked at it. Have a photo here of what it, just from an aerial standpoint. The request itself, in terms of the square footage and the setback, is acceptable under the code. The issue is only this off-premise signage issue. And I believe under, I believe this issue really is, as I met out and talked to the applicant about it, within your code, you have under eleven seventy-nine thirteen, eleven seventy-nine thirteen L, alteration of non-conforming signs. L three, I believe this covers the scenario that we're talking about with the applicant. It states that non-conforming signs can be altered, and there's three different reasons it can be altered. When the existing use has new ownership, which results in a change in name or essentially expansion of a business on the property. When the space is reoccupied by a similar use and the new applicant or the new occupant requires no external building or site renovations, which is the case in this as well. And then when the such replacement sign can be accomplished without alteration to the structural framing. Now, in this case, the structural framing is being changed, being improved. So I think items A and B under L three do qualify and allow the non-conforming sign to be modified. And to ease some of the concerns about access, because there's a long driveway that goes to the back, the applicant has stated that there's cross easements leading back to the, to the rear properties to take care of any maintenance issues, if you will, that may arise in the future.
All right.
So I think that.
So you're satisfied that it can move forward?
I, I do think so at this time.
The sign company's prepared?
Yeah, again, the area and the setback was all acceptable in the first place. It was just this issue about non-premise signs, and as I dove into it with the applicant, I do think the non-conforming section of the code applies.
All right, questions, comments from the commissioners?
Landscaping, says here, is that correct? Did you want him to do some kind of landscaping, Brian, with shrubs, flowers, as you suggested or?
Yeah, typically, the planning commission has required some low-line shrubs and flowers around the base of signs when they approve ground signs.
Yeah, there's no problem, no problem with that.
All right, anything else, commissioners?
Everybody else, yes.
All right. No other questions? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? There you go. Well, you want to.
Joe, we did all those arguments up front.
I'll argue with you.
Sometimes you don't have to argue, and I want to thank you, Brian, for working with Joe. That was, you know, he went out of his way.
No, here's what we did bring, I did bring a photograph of it, Brian. That is the fifty-foot easement that drives right into his man's excavating property. So I think, okay, you did a fine job. I don't know what you mean anymore. Okay, I'm glad.
If I got that from you and he got that from me, he's a.
No, he just.
All right, Joe, thank you very much.
There you go. There's to be one more comment, I think. Now, Mr. Claus.
Hi.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Go bring it.
She said she left it upstairs, so she has to bring it next time.
Poor Janelle, she runs around like crazy, gotta do everything single-handed. Thank you for that. I believe that was the last item on the agenda. Yeah, we have a couple of table items. Our next meeting is October twentieth. Just so that the commission is aware, we have a bid on the property on Highland Point for a soccer field under a roof, in other words, in. All right, so they want to move forward with that, but we're still negotiating, so I can't tell you anymore about it. But we gave them approval conceptually to go forward. So now they're talking about buying the property. One of the things that I think we can't lose sight of is I'm going to ask for a light Highland Point and Highland Road. That road is, Highland Road is just so bad, maybe a light there will give a break in the traffic. We're gonna try at least so some people can get out. First of all, they can't get out of Highland Point on the Highland because there's so much traffic. And then even all the way down to Shepherd, South, I'm sorry, South Bedford, it's hard getting out. Maybe this will give us a little break in traffic. So that's the plan. Whether it'll be there when everything's said and done will depend on negotiation. So we're doing that right now. Any questions?
Pre-sizable cost type thing.
The O S?
A hundred thousand dollars on the low side.
Believe me, yeah, well.
Yeah, because somebody's coming out of there, need a big boy coming from the steel warehouse in order to be able to pull out on the Highland. They take up most of the road while trying to get up the speed.
Well, one of the things is, that's encouraging, is when we kind of hinted that, they were said, we've done that before. They really want to be here and they really want that property. So we're trying to get something that's fair and equitable to everybody. And maybe we can have them do that, which was, maybe give us some help with that traffic on the Highland. Okay, thank you for coming. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
No second, we can't. Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Bye, Rita.
Well, what do you think, community? Exciting enough?
Brooke says, well, maybe when me and Luke are at the, at the church. She said, maybe me and Kim can go a little bit trustless.